Good evening. My name is Kyle Carr and this is my colleague Lance Onslott. And we are from the Public Policy and Management Center at Wichita State University. We're one arm of the Hugo Wall School of Public Affairs. And our role is really to go into communities and do all types of consulting with them. So we do a little bit of strategic planning, we do a little bit of training, we do a little organizational assessment. And Bel Air has asked us to kind of lead your community through a process, a community engagement process, to determine where you're at right now, where you want to be, and how you're going to get there. And so this is, tonight as the mayor said, this is a first step in a much longer process that will involve several different steps. And really the purpose is tonight is just to get your initial perceptions and answers to four general questions that I'm going to pose to you. I was going to break us up into groups, but I think based on our size, I think we can just manage it all as one big group. And so what we'll do is we'll put the questions up here, one at a time, and you'll have the opportunity to kind of think and peruse about what your opinions are, and then you can call out as you're ready. And Lance here will be capturing your information on whiteboards. Now depending on what themes we hear tonight, what themes emerge, that might help drive how we do a paper survey or how we do future community engagement efforts. Any questions about what we're going to do? This isn't a race, so there's no like prize to be first to answer, so if it takes you some time to really think about what you want to say, that's fine, we have time to be able to do that. No questions? Okay. So we're going to start with what makes you proud to live in Bel Air? So a sense of community. Okay? What else? So you've got an individual sense of community out here, but you're close enough to some large city amenities that it's convenient for you. Good. Safe? Okay? Safety is important. Okay? So we've got a good separation between the commercial part and where people are living. Good. So there's a sense of excitement because you do have growth happening. Good. What else? Okay. So location again, and then the progressive nature of... Okay. So diversity of housing, types of housing, types of land. Okay? Proximity of schools. Okay? So you're seeing an influx of younger people who grew up here, and now they're coming back and bringing their families back to live? Okay. So the recreation center. Talk a little bit more about that, when you say it touched students' lives. Okay. So a sense of community, because the recreation center contributes to that sense of community. And the rec programming is... Quality of staff. Okay. So quality of staff, quality of programming, the nature of the programming, the culture of the organization. Cool. That's awesome. Beautiful sunset tonight when I was driving in here, just absolutely beautiful, very pretty. What else? Okay. So it's interconnected. So interconnected pathway. Yes? So residence-wise and also city staff-wise, like in terms of how they keep... Okay. Cool. Very cool. So those signs are relatively new? Okay. Right. Okay. So good senior residences. Anything else? Want to share? Nope? Okay. Next question. In general, if you think just generally, what amenities are important in the community in which you choose to live? So you could live anywhere, right? You choose to live in Bel Air. So is there a certain mix of services here that are attractive to you? Or are there things that, amenities that are not here, that maybe you would like to have? Can you talk more about kind of your thoughts on that and what that would look like? Are you thinking to Wichita? Public transportation? Are you thinking that in terms of being here in Bel Air or just in general? Okay. So I hear public transportation. Yes? Okay. So convenience, when you're running errands and that type of thing, it's convenient for you? Okay. So health facilities, health and wellness. Like to have parking? So parks, green spaces, the trail we talked about. Anything not here that you would like to see here, other than we talked about public transportation, but other types of things that maybe you'd like to see in the community? Bike paths? Okay? Bike paths? I think you had your hand up. Restaurants? Okay. Green initiatives. When you say restaurant, are you thinking in terms of, I mean, are you thinking of like a hometown type of restaurant that someone would open maybe that lived here? Or are you thinking more like a chain? So something that's unique for your community? Okay, great. A donut shop? Okay. Donut shop, put a star by that one. Are you saying I can come here and open one and make a killing? And coffee, sure. Okay. Okay. So extension of bike paths to connect... Okay? More business for the donut shop! Okay. Right. Recycling, single stream? Great. Anything else? Perfect. Okay. Next question. What challenges does Bel Air face? Think in terms of one to five years out. What do you see as the major challenges your community faces? Okay. Because of the way the growth has occurred? Oh, how you're pinned in, okay. Yeah. So it's an interesting shape. I think you were going to say something. Sustainability. So talk about energy, talk about water, the water, the water, the water, the water, all of those things that can use for growth, the need to be, sustainability, to be considered in that, in the commercial growth, can help all of us if we can use our energy, if we can use our water, if we can help all of us, yeah. Okay? Oh, sorry. Okay. Right. Okay. So different ways of growth, different approaches to that. So when you were talking about sustainability, were you talking about having a community conversation about sustainability? Okay. So smart growth principles? Okay. Good. What other challenges? So a mix, a mix of development types. You go. So a place, a place. My donut shop, okay. Yeah, I want that to be the place, for sure. Well, you don't have to eat the donuts, I mean... So a place, a place. My donut shop, okay. Yeah, I want that to be the place, for sure. Well, you don't have to eat the donuts, I mean... So is it... Can we capture that as revisiting a coordinated effort in terms of planning? Is that okay to capture it that way? Okay. Perfect. So kind of revisiting that coordinated effort in terms of planning. Yes? Okay. So a mix, a mix of development types. You go. So a place, a place. My donut shop, okay. Yeah, I want that to be the place, for sure. Well, you don't have to eat the donuts, I mean... So is it... Can we capture that as revisiting a coordinated effort in terms of planning? Is that okay to capture it that way? Okay. Perfect. So kind of revisiting that coordinated effort in terms of planning. Yes? Okay. Commercial vehicles coming through town, alternate routes? Okay. So a loss of sense of community because the schools... Okay. So health facilities, health and wellness. Like to have parking? So parks, green spaces, the trail we talked about. Anything not here that you would like to see here, other than we talked about public transportation, but other types of things that maybe you'd like to see in the community? Okay. Bike paths? I think you had your hand up. Restaurants? Okay. Green initiatives. When you say restaurant, are you thinking in terms of, I mean, are you thinking of like a hometown type of restaurant that someone would open maybe that lived here? Or are you thinking more like a chain? So something that's unique for your community? Okay. Great. A donut shop? Okay. Donut shop, put a star by that one. Are you saying I can come here and open one and make a killing? And coffee, sure. Okay. Great. Okay. So extension of bike paths to connect... Okay? More business for the donut shop! Okay. Right. Recycling, single stream? Great. Anything else? Perfect. Okay. Next question. What challenges does Bel Air face? Think in terms of one to five years out. What do you see as the major challenges your community faces? Okay. Because of the way the growth has occurred? Oh, how you're pinned in, okay. Yeah. So it's an interesting shape. I think you were going to say something. Sustainability. So talk about energy, talk about water, the water, the water, the water, the water, all of those things that can use for growth, the need to be, sustainability, to be considered in that, in the commercial growth, can help all of us if we can use our energy, if we can use our water, if we can help all of us, yeah. Okay. Oh, sorry. Okay. Right. Okay. So different ways of growth, different approaches to that. So when you were talking about sustainability, were you talking about having a community conversation about sustainability? Okay. So smart growth principles? Okay. Good. What other challenges? Okay. So a mix, a mix of development types. You go. So a place, a place. My donut shop, okay. Yeah, I want that to be the place, for sure. Well, you don't have to eat the donuts, I mean... So a mix, a mix of development types. You go. So a place, a place. My donut shop, okay. Yeah, I want that to be the place, for sure. Well, you don't have to eat the donuts, I mean... So a mix, a mix of development types. You go. So a place, a place. My donut shop, okay. Yeah, I want that to be the place, for sure. Well, you don't have to eat the donuts, I mean... So a mix, a mix of development types. You go. So a place, a place. My donut shop, okay. Yeah, I want that to be the place, for sure. Well, you don't have to eat the donuts, I mean... So a mix, a mix of development types. You go. So a place, a place. My donut shop, okay. Yeah, I want that to be the place, for sure. Well, you don't have to eat the donuts, I mean... So a mix, a mix of development types. You go. So a place, a place. My donut shop, okay. Yeah, I want that to be the place, for sure. Well, you don't have to eat the donuts, I mean... So a mix, a mix of development types. You go. So a place, a place. My donut shop, okay. Yeah, I want that to be the place, for sure. Well, you don't have to eat the donuts, I mean... So a mix, a mix of development types. You go. So a place, a place. My donut shop, okay. Yeah, I want that to be the place, for sure. Well, you don't have to eat the donuts, I mean... So a mix, a mix of development types. You go. So a place, a place. My donut shop, okay. Yeah, I want that to be the place, for sure. Well, you don't have to eat the donuts, I mean... So a mix, a mix of development types. You go. So a place, a place. My donut shop, okay. Yeah, I want that to be the place, for sure. Well, you don't have to eat the donuts, I mean... So a mix, a mix of development types. You go. So a place, a place. My donut shop, okay. Yeah, I want that to be the place, for sure. Well, you don't have to eat the donuts, I mean... So a mix, a mix of development types. You go. So a place, a place. My donut shop, okay. Yeah, I want that to be the place, for sure. Well, you don't have to eat the donuts, I mean... So a mix, a mix of development types. You go. So a place, a place. My donut shop, okay. Yeah, I want that to be the place, for sure. Well, you don't have to eat the donuts, I mean... So a mix, a mix of development types. You go. So a place, a place. My donut shop, okay. Yeah, I want that to be the place, for sure. Well, you don't have to eat the donuts, I mean... So a mix, a mix of development types. You go. So a place, a place. My donut shop, okay. Yeah, I want that to be the place, for sure. Well, you don't have to eat the donuts, I mean... So a mix, a mix of development types. You go. So a place, a place. My donut shop, okay. Yeah, I want that to be the place, for sure. Well, you don't have to eat the donuts, I mean... So a mix, a mix of development types. You go. So a place, a place. My donut shop, okay. Yeah, I want that to be the place, for sure. Well, you don't have to eat the donuts, I mean... So a mix, a mix of development types. You go. So a place, a place. My donut shop, okay. Yeah, I want that to be the place, for sure. Well, you don't have to eat the donuts, I mean... So a mix, a mix of development types. You go. So a place, a place. My donut shop, okay. Yeah, I want that to be the place, for sure. Well, you don't have to eat the donuts, I mean... So a mix, a mix of development types. You go. So a place, a place. My donut shop, okay. Yeah, I want that to be the place, for sure. Well, you don't have to eat the donuts, I mean... So a mix, a mix of development types. You go. So a place, a place. My donut shop, okay. Yeah, I want that to be the place, for sure. Well, you don't have to eat the donuts, I mean... So a mix, a mix of development types. You go. So a place, a place. My donut shop, okay. Yeah, I want that to be the place, for sure. Well, you don't have to eat the donuts, I mean... So a mix, a mix of development types. You go. So a place, a place. My donut shop, okay. Yeah, I want that to be the place, for sure. Well, you don't have to eat the donuts, I mean... So a mix, a mix of development types. You go. So a place, a place. My donut shop, okay. Yeah, I want that to be the place, for sure. Well, you don't have to eat the donuts, I mean... So a mix, a mix of development types. You go. So a place, a place. My donut shop, okay. Yeah, I want that to be the place, for sure. Well, you don't have to eat the donuts, I mean... So a mix, a mix of development types. You go. So a place, a place. My donut shop, okay. Yeah, I want that to be the place, for sure. Well, you don't have to eat the donuts, I mean... So a mix, a mix of development types. You go. So a place, a place. My donut shop, okay. Yeah, I want that to be the place, for sure. Well, you don't have to eat the donuts, I mean... So a mix, a mix of development types. You go. So a place, a place. My donut shop, okay. Yeah, I want that to be the place, for sure. Well, you don't have to eat the donuts, I mean... So a mix, a mix of development types. You go. So a place, a place. My donut shop, okay. Yeah, I want that to be the place, for sure. Well, you don't have to eat the donuts, I mean... So a mix, a mix of development types. You go. So a place, a place. My donut shop, okay. Yeah, I want that to be the place, for sure. Well, you don't have to eat the donuts, I mean... So a mix, a mix of development types. You go. So a place, a place. My donut shop, okay. Yeah, I want that to be the place, for sure. Well, you don't have to eat the donuts, I mean... So a mix, a mix of development types. You go. So a place, a place. My donut shop, okay. Yeah, I want that to be the place, for sure. Well, you don't have to eat the donuts, I mean... So a mix, a mix of development types. You go. So a place, a place. My donut shop, okay. Yeah, I want that to be the place, for sure. Well, you don't have to eat the donuts, I mean... So a mix, a mix of development types. You go. So a place, a place. My donut shop, okay. Yeah, I want that to be the place, for sure. Well, you don't have to eat the donuts, I mean... So a mix, a mix of development types. You go. So a place, a place. My donut shop, okay. Yeah, I want that to be the place, for sure. Well, you don't have to eat the donuts, I mean... So a mix, a mix of development types. You go. So a place, a place. My donut shop, okay. Yeah, I want that to be the place, for sure. Well, you don't have to eat the donuts, I mean... So a mix, a mix of development types. You go. So a place, a place. My donut shop, okay. Yeah, I want that to be the place, for sure. Well, you don't have to eat the donuts, I mean... So a mix, a mix of development types. You go. So a place, a place. My donut shop, okay. Yeah, I want that to be the place, for sure. Well, you don't have to eat the donuts, I mean... So a mix, a mix of development types. You go. So a place, a place. My donut shop, okay. Yeah, I want that to be the place, for sure. Well, you don't have to eat the donuts, I mean... So a mix, a mix of development types. You go. So a place, a place. My donut shop, okay. Yeah, I want that to be the place, for sure. Well, you don't have to eat the donuts, I mean... So a mix, a mix of development types. You go. So a place, a place. My donut shop, okay. Yeah, I want that to be the place, for sure. Well, you don't have to eat the donuts, I mean... So a mix, a mix of development types. You go. So a place, a place. My donut shop, okay. Yeah, I want that to be the place, for sure. Well, you don't have to eat the donuts, I mean... So a mix, a mix of development types. You go. So a place, a place. My donut shop, okay. Yeah, I want that to be the place, for sure. Well, you don't have to eat the donuts, I mean... So a mix, a mix of development types. You go. So a place, a place. My donut shop, okay. Yeah, I want that to be the place, for sure. Well, you don't have to eat the donuts, I mean... So a mix, a mix of development types. You go. So a place, a place. My donut shop, okay. Yeah, I want that to be the place, for sure. Well, you don't have to eat the donuts, I mean... So a mix, a mix of development types. You go. So a place, a place. My donut shop, okay. Yeah, I want that to be the place, for sure. Well, you don't have to eat the donuts, I mean... So a mix, a mix of development types. You go. So a place, a place. My donut shop, okay. Yeah, I want that to be the place, for sure. Well, you don't have to eat the donuts, I mean... So a mix, a mix of development types. You go. So a place, a place. My donut shop, okay. Yeah, I want that to be the place, for sure. Well, you don't have to eat the donuts, I mean... So a mix, a mix of development types. You go. So a place, a place. My donut shop, okay. Yeah, I want that to be the place, for sure. Well, you don't have to eat the donuts, I mean... So a mix, a mix of development types. You go. So a place, a place. My donut shop, okay. Yeah, I want that to be the place, for sure. Well, you don't have to eat the donuts, I mean... So a mix, a mix of development types. You go. So a place, a place. My donut shop, okay. Yeah, I want that to be the place, for sure. Well, you don't have to eat the donuts, I mean... So a mix, a mix of development types. You go. So a place, a place. My donut shop, okay. Yeah, I want that to be the place, for sure. Well, you don't have to eat the donuts, I mean... So a mix, a mix of development types. You go. So a place, a place. My donut shop, okay. Yeah, I want that to be the place, for sure. Well, you don't have to eat the donuts, I mean... So a mix, a mix of development types. You go. So a place, a place. My donut shop, okay. Yeah, I want that to be the place, for sure. Well, you don't have to eat the donuts, I mean... So a mix, a mix of development types. You go. So a place, a place. My donut shop, okay. Yeah, I want that to be the place, for sure. Well, you don't have to eat the donuts, I mean... So a mix, a mix of development types. You go. So a place, a place. My donut shop, okay. Yeah, I want that to be the place, for sure. Well, you don't have to eat the donuts, I mean... So a mix, a mix of development types. You go. So a place, a place. My donut shop, okay. Yeah, I want that to be the place, for sure. Well, you don't have to eat the donuts, I mean... So a mix, a mix of development types. You go. So a place, a place. My donut shop, okay. Yeah, I want that to be the place, for sure. Well, you don't have to eat the donuts, I mean... So a mix, a mix of development types. You go. So a place, a place. My donut shop, okay. Yeah, I want that to be the place, for sure. Well, you don't have to eat the donuts, I mean... So a mix, a mix of development types. You go. So a place, a place. My donut shop, okay. Yeah, I want that to be the place, for sure. Well, you don't have to eat the donuts, I mean... So a mix, a mix of development types. You go. So a place, a place. My donut shop, okay. Yeah, I want that to be the place, for sure. Well, you don't have to eat the donuts, I mean... So a mix, a mix of development types. You go. So a place, a place. My donut shop, okay. Yeah, I want that to be the place, for sure. Well, you don't have to eat the donuts, I mean... So a mix, a mix of development types. You go. So a place, a place. My donut shop, okay. Yeah, I want that to be the place, for sure. Well, you don't have to eat the donuts, I mean... So a mix, a mix of development types. You go. So a place, a place. My donut shop, okay. Yeah, I want that to be the place, for sure. Well, you don't have to eat the donuts, I mean... So a mix, a mix of development types. You go. So a place, a place. My donut shop, okay. Yeah, I want that to be the place, for sure. Well, you don't have to eat the donuts, I mean... So a mix, a mix of development types. You go. So a place, a place. My donut shop, okay. Yeah, I want that to be the place, for sure. Well, you don't have to eat the donuts, I mean... So a mix, a mix of development types. You go. So a place, a place. My donut shop, okay. Yeah, I want that to be the place, for sure. Well, you don't have to eat the donuts, I mean... So a mix, a mix of development types. You go. So a place, a place. My donut shop, okay. Yeah, I want that to be the place, for sure. Well, you don't have to eat the donuts, I mean... So a mix, a mix of development types. You go. So a place, a place. My donut shop, okay. Yeah, I want that to be the place, for sure. Well, you don't have to eat the donuts, I mean... So a mix, a mix of development types. You go. So a place, a place. My donut shop, okay. Yeah, I want that to be the place, for sure. Well, you don't have to eat the donuts, I mean... So a mix, a mix of development types. You go. So a place, a place. My donut shop, okay. Yeah, I want that to be the place, for sure. Well, you don't have to eat the donuts, I mean... So a mix, a mix of development types. You go. So a place, a place. My donut shop, okay. Yeah, I want that to be the place, for sure. Well, you don't have to eat the donuts, I mean... So a mix, a mix of development types. You go. So a place, a place. My donut shop, okay. Yeah, I want that to be the place, for sure. Well, you don't have to eat the donuts, I mean... So a mix, a mix of development types.[1222.12] So a mix, a mix of development types? No, no. You go. So a place, a place. My donut shop, okay. Yeah, I want that to be the place for sure. Well, you don't have to eat the donuts, I mean. So. So, is it? Can we, can we capture that as a quarter, revisiting a coordinated effort in terms of planning? Is that okay to capture it that way? Okay, perfect. So kind of revisiting that coordinated effort in terms of planning? Yes? Okay. Commercial vehicles coming through town, alternate routes? So crosswalks at the schools? Walkability, good. Safety, good. Any other challenges? Yes? Okay. So a loss of sense of community because the schools? Yeah, so you don't have a team. Right? Okay, good. Good one. I mean, bad, but good. Other challenges you guys want to share? I know everyone's kind of hankering to get out for State of the Union, basketball, all those types of things. Anything else you want to call out? Okay, last question. Based on what we talked about tonight, what do you see as being the one most critical issue facing your community? Do you want to expand? So we've got water. Okay. Water? To help fix the debt? If you can expand the tax base, yeah. That's okay. You first and then you can go. So quantity and quality. Quantity and quality. Make a mark by that. Okay, what else? Okay. So a downtown, that's one thing I have noticed that you lack is a kind of centralized place. People running into one another, people seeing neighbors. Okay. So a downtown, some sort of centralized shopping type of place. With the donut shop, yeah. The donut shop's gonna be the central attraction, trust me. It's gonna be a heck of a donut shop. Anything else? Okay. Anything else anyone wants to share just in general while we're here? Very good, Lance. Better. You wouldn't want me writing, trust me, my handwriting is atrocious. Anything else anyone wants to share? Okay. We don't have a formalized set plan yet, this is kind of a first step. We'll probably do a community survey next, it'll be a paper survey. It'll go to every household in, in, in Bel Air. Next we'll probably conduct some focus groups. And we'll go and visit some community stakeholder groups and kind of get their perspectives and that type of thing. And then we kind of have to see where we're at in terms of, are there certain themes emerging of what people want? Is there a diversity of what people want? Or are we hearing kind of the same two or three things over again? If we're hearing the same two or three things over again, then we know that we probably hit a good chord in terms of what your community wants. If we're not, then we might have to determine, we might have to change avenues a little bit and try to do something else to kind of dig down into the details to try to find those themes out. And so eventually I, I, I think, I mean, and maybe the mayor or Ty wants to speak to that more in terms of what the longer term plan is for the information. Probably the next four to five months. Next four to five months, six months. So we're still working on all those details. This is really just an initial, this was an initial opportunity for those of you who are really, really interested in your community. I really appreciate the fact that you all came out and participated the way you did. It's just kind of an opportunity to see if we're hearing certain things once we start looking through this that might drive how we do, as I mentioned earlier, the paper questionnaire, the focus groups, that type of thing as we, as we hear, start to hear information from residents. Well, I really appreciate, you'll be hearing from us in the future for sure. I'll give it back to the mayor.